...that it brings to us. Amen.
Thank you. All right, we will start with our recognitions.
Test one, two. Am I on?
Are you on?
Test one, two. Okay, thanks.
Okay, we're going to start our meeting tonight recognizing some special students and staff members. I'd first like to call up Jonah Rocky, Andrew Rose, and Jacob Freeland. These three participated in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. Jonah and Andrew have been named commended students in the 2018 National Merit Scholar Program, and they were placed among the top 50,000 in the nation of more than 1.6 million students who entered and took the preliminary PSAT. They're being recognized with other students in the nation for their exceptional academic promise. And Jacob, raise your hand, Jacob, is going one step further and is actually a finalist competing for a National Merit Scholarship Award. This is a big, big deal at this level, so congratulations.
Our tradition requires you guys speak a little bit, so first, you're going to introduce anyone that brought you here, but also talk a little about what's going to happen next step as far as next year. Where are you planning to go? If you don't know, say, "I don't know." We've got some people back here like Purdue a lot on this end, so if you want to root for Purdue, that'd be okay, but wherever you want to do. And then what you're going to study as well, what's your future plan? So, start with you, Jonah.
My dad is here with me tonight, and next year, I don't know where I'm going to college, and I'll probably study something in the math or sciences.
So I'm Jacob. My mother and father, Wendy and John, I'd like to go to Hillsdale College in Michigan and study public policy.
So, this is a photo of Time Square Squeeze Inn. This is our board president, she's going to represent, and smile pretty for everybody. Congratulations, good luck. Congratulations.
Next, we'd like to recognize Javen Johnson.
Who was selected by the Indiana High School Golf Coaches Association for the 2017 Boys' All-State Golf Team. This is an honor, as only 20 students make this team. Come forward, Javen.
Congratulations. So you got to hear a little bit ahead of time what you have to do, so introduce your family that's here with you tonight, and then also talk a little bit about your future plans.
Well, my mom and dad, Jermaine and Dana, brought me tonight along with my sister, came with me, and I plan on studying finance at Taylor University and playing golf there as well.
Good luck, and good luck to the upcoming season.
Lastly, tonight, we'd like to recognize Michelle Bright from our HR department. Michelle earned her professional in human resources certification. This is 175 multiple-choice exam, and it was composed of six functional areas: workforce planning and employment, employee and labor relations, compensation and benefits, HR development, business management and strategy, and risk management. Recertification is done every three years. Congratulations, Michelle.
Congratulations. Hopefully, your future plans mean staying with us. But would you introduce your family as well? And then talk a little about the study behind trying to get and receiving this degree.
I'm here tonight with my husband, Jeff, and my daughter, Addie, who's hiding. She's in fourth grade at Creekside. So, the study process was quite lengthy and tedious, and I studied every night for six months almost, and weekends, and in Florida. So, lots of sitting, and they may not have missed me very much, but I missed them during the process. But I'm back now, so it's good to be finished.
Congratulations, that'll help you and us, so, well done.
Thank you very much. That will conclude that recognition for tonight.
You're more than welcome to stay for the business portion, but if you would like to exit, now would be a great time. Okay, we will start with public and board comments. We'll start with public comments. If you have anything that pertains to the agenda, you can step up to podium. Okay, seeing none.
I do have one comment on the item. The Home View presentation is going to come up in just a little bit. Mr. Young had a couple suggestion changes for the MOU, and Mr. Gaborowski and I have chatted about those. And so what we'll do is, we will hear a presentation tonight, and then we'll make the corrected changes per our legal counsel, and then get Mark to sign them, and with your permission, I will then sign based on Roger's recommendations.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, then we will move on to the music council.
We have not met, however, Wednesday night is the fall concert for the choir. I don't have any of the schedule for anything for the band, and the musical is coming up the first weekend in November, and that would be the Addams Family. I'm certainly proud to say that my son is Gomez, so he's learning a Hispanic accent thanks to some of the fine teachers here. So, that's coming up. I do know that the fall concert is already sold out, and the musical does sell out quickly, so you have five opportunities, and most of those do sell out. So, if you're going to go, you need to get your tickets before you just show up, so that's all yet.
Can I just add, Performing Arts Center hosted the Hitmen on Saturday night, and it was a great show. I think if the audience, if people had known really what they were going to get or whatever, they would have really loved it. And I was thought was there, myself, but they had members of the bands from different professional groups, from playing with Elton John, The Four Seasons. We had someone from Sesame Street. He was quite the performer, but it was a great show, and we're continuing to try to get opportunities like this to move forward, to help our community. So, Doug did a good job bringing him here. Mrs. Campbell was there as well with her son, so I think they can highlight the success of it, so.
Thank you. We'll move on with the athletic council.
We met last week. Mr. Doty is diving in deeply into the athletic world. He's got a pretty big bucket list that he's working on. We talked about the expansion of the strength and conditioning programs down to the middle school. He's working to build that booster club support for the athletic groups, and he's working on sponsorship and potentially new LED boards, so more to come at later meetings. And you'll see him on the agenda later today on the charitable gaming license. Also, some highlights as we wrap up the fall sports. Our girls' golf team, we're regional qualifiers. Our boys' cross-country, we're conference and county champs. Thank you, and sectional champs. And our girls' cross-country, we're conference runner-up. Regional qualifier. So, we had some great teams for the fall. Tennis, Rod Snyder, our tennis coach, after 15 years, is retiring, so we'll miss him out on the courts. And our girls' volleyball was, right now, 22 and four, so really impressive schedule there as we get to the end of that season.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to legislative council.
We did meet to go over some policies that we're going to review today.
Yeah, the one that I think we need to be aware of is there's a huge discussion right now about school calendars. We received word from the superintendent of public education, and a lot of energy around moving the calendar back towards the end of August, with September kind of being the circle they'd like to move to. If you recall, last year, the vote was split, it was actually tied. The early conversations, they probably have enough votes this year to push that through. So that could impact a lot of things over the next few months, so I'll keep you posted on that. That's really the big one that we're hearing. Jeff, is there anything else that you're hearing about from your end? No, that's the big one.
All right, thank you. Superintendent Strategic Task Force Council?
No, we did meet to look at Title IV. Title IV is a new federal grant. Well, it's an old grant that they wrapped into a new package. We received it a few years ago. It was part of the 21st Century Grant, if you remember, Blue Key. Blue Key came out of these dollars. We met as a group and decided that we're going to hit pause and apply for the next cycle of Title IV, because there's a lot of stuff that we could look at and fit into that, but we just didn't feel we had enough information, enough time for the very short window. It's a great conversation around what we're doing, but we're going to opt to not participate this year.
Thank you. Superintendent Strategic Plan Projects?
I'm going to send to Mr. Mercer for this one.
We met in the last week with our executive steering team, which consists of Mr. Lamb, Mr. Thompson, Dr. Clendenning, Jeff Sewell, myself. We are embarking on a 21-month journey that has lots of projects housed underneath. We did start last week with our employer of choice committee. Many thanks to all those that participate, to Mrs. Kepner for helping staff that, as well as all the support staff that's on there. So, lots of activity right now. We'll have more to report as we get down the road a bit. Right now, we're developing the core tenants of what an employer of choice would look like if we were indeed the employer of choice.
Thank you. The Communication Committee, we did meet, and we discussed the possibility of schools that want to implement additional social sites as a way to communicate with different types of audiences such as students. We want to make sure that when they do that, that their communication strategies are well thought out, and they can bring those to the committee so we can kind of keep tabs on everything level across the district. And we're also tossing around the idea of hosting a virtual community engagement event. This would be where parents and committee members can ask questions or engage online, possibly with Dr. Clendenning, so that's it. And then we will move on to collective bargaining.
Well, we did approve last month, I guess, in the last month, a two-year contract, and I just want to publicly say thanks to the CTA, because they absolutely were very collaborative, so thank you very much.
Central Nine?
So we meet on Thursday, and I was not able to attend last month, so.
Okay, RDC?
I was not able to.
Back to Central Nine. Jeff just received today our Form 30, and we are up about $66,000 for the number of kids participating in CPE programs, so thank you to Mr. Ahouse and his guidance team, a lot of hard work to get that. And so Jeff will be signing his signature on the form to send back, but that's a little bit of positive news about that.
Great. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, signify by the sign of aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, we will move on to the superintendent reports. 10 times presentations, the first one is Jeff Bright.
Hello. I'm Jeff Bright, working maintenance and energy here at FCS. My today's grant application was centered upon visiting sites from Franklin to Fort Pan to explore solar energy and the way that it is used in school facilities. Fortunately, I was selected to be a member of the first group of support staff 10x grants, and I'm extremely grateful for that opportunity. Trip started out, Richardsville Elementary School, which is in Bowling Green, Kentucky. It's the first net-zero school in the U.S. It's an 82,000-square-foot facility, pre-K through sixth. They have a capacity of about 600, current enrollment of about 425. As a comparison, Creekside's about 95,000 square feet, so a little bit smaller than that. Bowling Green has a 5 to 10-degree higher average temperature than Franklin, and I know that sounds pointless at this point, but it'll make sense here in a minute. If you can go to the next one, please. On the roof and in the parking lot, they have these photovoltaic cells. That shade structure there has photovoltaic cells as well. Add them together, there's 348 kilowatts of power there, which produces around 420,000 kilowatt-hours per year, which is extremely impressive. At 100% production for an eight-month period from January to August, the system generated in excess, actually, of 66,000 kilowatts, of which this school corporation got paid back money. So, pretty neat stuff there. Sorry, I got way too much stuff going on here. The school was planned out very well. They've built it with these new Dura forms. Those provide a ridiculously high amount of insulation, values as high as R50, standards R20, R30. R50 really will drastically reduce heating and cooling costs, so. Go to the next one, please, Matt. The school utilizes a lot of natural light. You can see these are light devices that magnify the light in the classroom. On the left is what it shows up like. They actually have a switch in the classroom so that they can turn them on or off, basically just like lights, but yet use free sun for their lighting. Some classrooms, as you can see on the left, even have excess light. The lower-floor classrooms use these light trays, but some of them actually have so much, they put cardboard up there to block them because they don't need that much. On the right, you can see how they use windows in the gymnasium to get extra light in there to help out. They convert DC voltage from the photovoltaic cells to AC voltage for the building to use. They do not have onsite batteries as they sell all of their excess power to the Tennessee Valley Authority. The building also uses geothermal HVAC and hot water generation. Interesting note on that, they use zero thermes of natural gas for heating and water. As a comparison, Creekside at 95,000 square feet, Union at 30,000 square feet, they each used over 10,000 thermes, averaged from 14 to 16. So, quite the massive savings by utilizing the earth for heating and cooling. This school is really neat. They have a lot of student involvement. These are in each of the hallways. Each hallway kind of has its own theme, letting the kids know kind of how things are going, how the energy is produced, how the geothermal works. Go to the next one, please. There's the other couple classrooms that they have them in, excuse me, the hallways. Really interact, the kids do very well. Typical K through 12 energy cost is about $1.25 per square foot. Creekside's actually better than that at $1.04 per square foot. Richardsville actually earned $0.48 per square foot, which I thought was quite interesting, make money back with your building. And the construction costs, it's really hard to nail this one down. They, depends on who you talk to, who's giving you the information, and how good they want to make it sound. Some places say that you could build it for almost the same amount as you could a regular school, other places not so much. So, that would take some delving into to really get to the bottom of it, but they were very hospitable. It was really neat. I contacted them, they gave me a tour, they were really nice people, it was very neat. The cool thing about this, too, is it's a rural community. You can see the building on the left, or the picture on the left. The building on the right was the original gymnasium, it was built in 1927. So, it's got a lot of rich history in this community, and they just decided when they built this school, they were going to really make it energy efficient. This whole school corporation, every one of its buildings is set up to be solar-powered. This is just the first one they've actually done it with, but they have the ability to add it on later as funds allow that to happen, so. Next place we went was Florence, Alabama, River Bend Energy Center. It's a one-square-mile solar facility, has 300,000 photovoltaic panels at this facility. The north-to-south lined rows, the panels are aligned that way, and they have small motors on each one of the panels that allow it to follow the sun from east to west for maximum efficiency. And quite frankly, this road is the one we came in on. These fields literally used to harvest cotton, corn, soybeans, and they now harvest solar energy, so I thought that was quite interesting. The 75 megawatts is rather large. There's a couple bigger ones out west, Evanka in Nevada, but this is capable of powering 15,000 homes. Franklin has around 8,885 homes, so just for reference there, but that was pretty interesting. I don't know if you've been by the facility in Trafalgar. This is it here, same amount of zoom. This is the one I went to in Alabama, so quite a bit larger in size. This is the interesting part Mr. Mercer will like very well. Non-education tax abatements were awarded. The county previously received $1,000 per year in taxes from the property, the school system, $571. With the solar panels, it now will receive $9 million over the life of the project, so quite a difference in funding from the farm fields to the solar energy fields. Yeah, you might need those, huh? From there, we went on south to Florida. Florida has a unique, obviously, they have a lot of sun, a little more than we have here, but they're, use their solar panels as a generator, basically, for power outages, hurricane shelters, things of that nature. University of Central Florida sent out a grant program, the $10 million federal stimulus grant. These schools applied for it. As you can see, they've kind of just put them on their facilities wherever they could. They're about 50 feet long, 18 feet wide, 10 feet tall, and they're really not as bad as they look in the picture as far as how they look on your property. Actually, I just went through that one, Matt, if you could go one more, thank you. This is a high school I went to. It's actually, will provide power to a shelter during outages, basically for critical energy such as lighting, communications, essential medical equipment, but it's also a supplement for the schools. Obviously, with these 10-kilowatt systems, it's not quite as robust as some of the larger systems, but they do see some benefit back from it throughout the year, as well as being able to power up in case of emergency. But they, like I said, they are tied to the grid, and the battery systems work exactly the same way as a generator works here at FCHS, or the middle school, or Custer Baker. It produces around 12,000 kilowatt-hours per year, which would translate around here to around $1,200 per year in power, so not too bad. Not going to get rich with that system, but it's not too bad. The next part of this was really fun. This is a Renegy Phoenix, it's all-in-one solar kit, so this is basically a briefcase that when you open it up, solar panels on each end, it has ports you can charge from it with USB, 110 volt, 12 volt, and so we took this and charged it via the sun throughout the week, and then we made a chart and wrote down and took good notes on how long it took to charge a certain amount, and how much we were able to charge from that amount, as you can see, well, maybe you can't see from over there, but the iPhones are most of what got charged on, but it's pretty interesting. The Renegy can gain 10% battery life in about two hours on a sunny day, which will charge four cell phones each 50% battery while charging at the same time. So, it's fairly capable little machine. And after very exhaustive research, I discovered the absolute best place to recharge batteries. Any kind you want to talk about, that's the best place to do it. And as far as the, I forgot to add this, the Renegy Phoenix, I'm in contact with a couple of teachers. They're going to use it in their classrooms for science, study some energy stuff with it, take it outside, charge it, so that should be exciting to see. That was basically the reason Bill and I talked about it at the time. Get it, let people use it, see how it works, maybe get some educational value out of it as well. So, thank you very much, truly appreciative of the opportunity.
Thank you. We will move on to Mrs. Carl's train.
Keski's pas, monsieur. Well, I'm grateful to all those who worked on the committee to select us for this grant. It was phenomenal, and I'm going to talk about my trip to Quebec this summer. If you think of culture as an iceberg, the things that we look at in language class are above the surface. We look at the language, we look at the crafts, we also eat a lot of food and make food, clothing and festivals and so forth. And I know that under the water are the beliefs that people that we are studying hold, and then deep underneath that are the values which they themselves may not be able to define. But I wanted to go see Canadian-French. I've never been to Canada, I've been to France three or four times, but this was a great opportunity. And so I started with the Chicago consulate, because I have a friend who works up there, and he gave me some suggestions as to what to do, and I'm going to try to incorporate a lot of these things that I've learned into my classroom, but the most important thing was just, for me, a French immersion, that I hadn't been immersed in French for a while, so it was great for that. France somehow held on to the culture, even though in 1759, the English took over Canada. And these people are native French speakers. It was amazing to me. Here we are, maybe 12 hours away in a car, but just a short flight away, and we're in a totally French culture. Go ahead, no, it's me. I love the connections between Canada and Indiana. Now, the fourth graders get to study French culture in Indiana, and at some point, I'll make the third-year people go down and maybe teach them a lesson this year, but between the voyagers and the explorers, and Champlain, Champlain went to Quebec, and then from there, other people went down the Mississippi, and so there are a lot of connections that we can put into history. And I think it's fascinating to the kids to see fun things like this and how that makes history come alive. So this is probably the oldest retail street in the continent. Rue Champlain, named after this guy, Samuel de Champlain. He was the first one there, he founded Quebec in 1608. What am I doing? Maybe you should do this. You're crock as he. Okay. Right. There are two parts to Quebec City, the top part and the lower part, the bas-ville. And the fascinating thing about all the shops on this lower part overlooking the St. Lawrence River are the artisan shops. It's obvious the Canadians value their connection to the land, and you can just flip through the shops here. Well, we're not there yet. Okay. Go ahead. Yeah. If you're in the lower part, then you're going to see the government buildings and the oldest cathedral. You can just stay with it, stay there, I'll wink at you, okay? Yeah, all right. You just want to see the food. Oh, okay. Well, you're just walking. Well, you're just walking in history. The people who are there are Quebecois and the other people who are there were from all over the world. When I sat down to eat at this place for breakfast, one day I was next to some people from London. The next day I asked the little girl, do you speak English too? Because they were speaking French and she said, no, I'm from Switzerland. So eh, you know, Quebec is so lovely that even the Swiss want to visit that. Okay, this is obviously very French. The bakeries are French, the pastries French, a lot of French foods. And then there are a lot of things like elk and moose on the menu. Okay. Yeah, French pastries and with the Canadian touch, some of these have maple. France, I mean Quebec has 90% of the maple production in the world. So they come by it honestly. When I take students next summer, I'm going to Montreal and to Quebec with the students and we get to have, eat dinner at a sugar shack. Okay? We'll have some of these foods with sugar in them, maple syrup in them. Okay? Go ahead. This is the poutine. This is why I've been waiting, I've been waiting a long time to have poutine. It's basically potatoes. One day I was looking at the hotels that I didn't select and a guy came across the street with two bags of potatoes peeled like this for a poutine shop. This is delicious. It's got gravy and cheese and onions on top of fried potatoes. Yeah, that's very Canadian. So I'm sure we'll be making some of that this year in French class. Now, this is what I waited one year to eat and it was lovely. Remember that picture of the, of the restaurant? This is the maple cake with fresh cream and hot syrup. I was in heaven. Okay. I did take a lot of pictures of clothing and food and so forth and so on because the kids like to see real things. The ones in the book are, are the ones in the book. And I try to get lots and lots of images other places, but when you're building a lesson on language, it's good to have cultural images that are real and you can build it that way. I teach with immersion, so I need tons and tons and tons of pictures, pictures on my lifeline. But this is a menu. And this is a little German touch in that same restaurant. Okay. German French, all the same in France. Okay. Now, a large part of Quebec history, as I learned in the museums, is the Catholic Church. The Catholic Church came and provided the education, provided the government for a while, and it still is very powerful there. There are some beautiful basilicas cathedral style there that I'm going to see next year again. And this is a pilgrimage site. People come here and leave their crutches. They stand up and walk, I guess. There are a lot of crutches in the museum. Another beautiful, beautiful basilica. You know, it's so exciting because I've taken kids to Spain eight times. So exciting to watch kids from Franklin get excited about architecture. They get so excited when they see beautiful buildings and, you know, our future engineers are looking at how these things are, are held up in the Gothic style and then they're, you know, I mean, I've taken them to lots of different styles in Spain, but this, this is beautiful and you won't see it in Franklin, Indiana. So good to get out. Quebec City started a lot of economy museums. There's a chocolate museum, there's a copper museum that I visited, and this is a wooden museum. This is what I mean by valuing the connection to the land. There's obviously a lot of wood in Canada and they, they build a lot of things of wood. They do wood carvings, they're everywhere. And this, this is a carver who connects folklore to his products. Okay. I visited a museum, which was fascinating, about the indigenous cultures. And that's always interesting to see, but they look like Inwards and I know the Inwards were in there. So this is a Christmas store with decorations that are very traditional for the area. And you know, on TV, I was, I was kind of fascinated by the way they covered the news around the world. They covered a lot of news around the world all the time. And at that same time Trudeau was in Rhode Island, I think, meeting with the governors from all over the country. Very exciting. He is such a, such a good speaker. So, and they just named a woman astronaut as their first, he's a president, right? Prime Minister? So it's very interesting to look at all the things that we typically ignore here. We're right so close to them and we're connected with them and people here in our, in our backyard work with Canadians. You know, my sister teaches nursing at the nursing school at IU and she's going to establish a program in Quebec. She has one in Spain for nurses. She, she developed a cultural unit. So I mean, this is something our students can look forward to when they're fluent in languages, to using the French or the Spanish and the third component of that program is Chinese in their, in their careers. If you're doing a career in marketing, you're doing a career in politics, it's kind of important to know what's out there. You know, look north and see Canada. That's probably it, isn't it? That's it. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm hungry.
Okay, we'll move on next to the quarterly corporation financial report.
This is where your appetite.
This is.
It's good. Nice place.
I don't know how I always follows these 10x things, but it seems like every month I do. I can't compete, so I'm not even going to try. This is your quarterly financial report. We are tracking along about as we had expected. I would highlight capital projects, transportation. You can see that both are in the red. We will be back next month, probably with a request for additional appropriation and to move some money out of rainy day. I will tell you both transportation and capital projects are running about $200,000 behind last year, meaning that more money has been spent this year in those areas than were last year at this same time. So depending on what happens in the last three months, we'll have some decisions to make about how much money we'll need to move and so forth. But I would be happy to answer any questions you might have beyond what I just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, we'll move on to the partnership with Homeview Health and Rehabilitation Center. Dr. Clendenning.
Mr. Kevorsky, you're up.
Mark and I have talked for a couple of months about opportunities to help our kids. You can hear about their need for a pipeline of some workers. And it's a unique partnership that we're talking about in the CNA program. So Mr. Kevorsky.
Thank you. My name is Mark Kevorsky. I'm the administrator at Homeview and I've been there nine years. We are owned by Riverview Hospital and Gariot from Marion, Indiana. So that's a little, we own 16 buildings in Indiana and about three in Florida. So I don't know why we didn't start this sooner, but I'm proposing an agreement and a partnership. Thanks for hearing me tonight. Central Nine and Ivy Tech run the same kind of programs. If a student wants to go off campus and go to Central Nine, but what I want to propose is that Homeview, come on campus and we teach and train a CNA classroom, use your classroom for the educational portion and then go back to Homeview for our clinical rotations with our nurses and nursing assistants. Ivy Tech runs a program for about $1,000. Central Nine students would have to attend that class. So I'm proposing if somebody wants to be a nursing student or just looking for employment beyond the McDonald's at $8, $9 an hour, that, that they look into a different career path. And as we're hiring nurses, physicians, other healthcare professionals, what a great place to start is in our CNA program. So it's a free program. We're going to provide our instructor to come here on site for no charge to the students. We're going to provide a free uniform. We're going to give the PPD Man Two test and then we're going to require the student to get a few things on their own, like I think the school's going to provide a background check and then we'll work through some of those avenues. So our employment, if we choose to hire the student, would be started between 1250 an hour to 1450. So that's a good wage. And then if we don't employ them, they will be certified by the state of Indiana once they pass their test and they can go get a job anywhere they want. So we're looking at a quarterly program. That's what, maybe about four times a year is what we want to offer. So we're hoping that we can get an agreement and do the partnership together. Can I answer any questions?
Just one question. Great program, good idea. Did I hear you say you're going to cover like the TB test and the other that'll be required to be around the patients?
Yes, we're going to provide the TB test at Homeview.
And certainly forgive me, I don't recall which one's Homeview in town.
Homeview, we're right next to Franklin College on State Street.
Okay, all right. Yep.
We have a head of Masonic home across the street from us. We're neighbors right, neighboring each other.
Thank you. Great program. I'm excited to hear that and appreciate your willingness to partner with us.
And just a little taste, the cart got ahead of the horse a little bit and we're seeking your approval. We're running an ad tomorrow based on approval. We can pull it if it's not approved, but it hit the Facebook page for Homeview. We had 171 likes over the weekend and we've been inundated with phone calls from students and adult learners alike. So it's been overpowering already.
And Mark was just sharing that one student said, this is really answered prayer. They were having financial stress at home and because of the pay and the process, this would be a very good first step for them to help with the family. So kind of gave me goosebumps to hear how we're helping kids. We did meet with Mr. Ahouse last Thursday and Mrs. Martin, our Director of Health Services, met two weeks ago with his department and Mark and I. So we have our ducks in a row as far as the school and the process and structure. And I think it's going to really benefit kids and we're very appreciative. We did talk about our kids will be guaranteed at least six spots, six to eight spots into the class. If they don't fill, we'll have, we'll have the community as well coming in to us. But our kids get first opportunity to sit for the test in the classroom. So if I, what we're going to do then, since the, down at action item, I will ask or however you guys want to do it, since there's really no money exchange for us to MOU and their employee will have to get a background check also that matches ours, which is one of the requirements. If you're all comfortable, then I will sign that and just keep you up to date. And Mr. Young will also sign off on the final MOU as well.
So are you asking to move this to an action item?
Well, I would like to see it moved to an action item, but I unfortunately don't have the MOU, so I was going to leave that to your discretion tonight.
Okay, so.
If we're comfortable with it, we can move it to an action item.
Yes. Yep.
So I'd move, move that we've moved this to an action item.
Okay, so we have a motion to move it to an action item. So all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none? Okay, so now we'll just move it down to the action item. Should we just go ahead and do that as our first action item then?
Thank you.
Okay.
So what are we approving? What are you? I'm not sure.
We're approving the partnership. The partnership with the MOU with the things that you just started. I will tell you, Mr. Young had a.
I didn't know if we were authorizing you to sign.
That will be one of the things that we'll put in there. But one, Mr. Young had a concern that there was something regarding to insurance policy good for seven years. And as Mark and I talked, that's something they had in another agreement with another MOU. They're willing to drop that. There'll be no, no other insurance provided. Also, the students will, well, obviously in the CNA capacity, they'll be interacting with patients. Roger had a concern about that, but I think one thing is he didn't realize that at C9, the same student could go to C9 in the next semester, do the exact same thing without any of our partnership opportunities. And so those were his concerns. There was another one as well. Do you remember the one, the one I told you about? Those were the major ones and Mark already said, that's fine, we'll drop those. So if you're comfortable, then we'll get Roger to.
Certainly I'm comfortable with Roger's input. So we, your motion is pending legal reviews. That's what I'm understanding.
Giving me the authority to sign.
Yes. Okay. So we have a motion. Any questions, any more questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay. Well, we will move on down to the rest of our action items. The first one being the approval of the 2018 budget. Mr. Mercer.
I was in front of you in August and did the workshop. We did a public hearing last month on the budget. What you see in the form of the resolution is exactly what we have talked about the last two months. And so I'm happy to answer any last minute questions if you have them. Otherwise, I am asking that you approve our budget to the tune of $56,142,523 for 2018.
Move for approval.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then next is Mr. Doty with the gaming license.
Thank you, Mrs. Up. I was here last month for a discussion item on the charitable gaming license. I went away with a, to research a couple of questions that were, was asked. One being the age to participate. You must be 18 years of age to participate in any of these charitable games. The second was the question about whether to apply on behalf of the district or the high school itself. It really needs to be the high school. Any school can apply. It's a $50 application fee. But the reason for that is because you can only have one fund account attached to the application. Therefore, if we were to do it at the district level, then it needs to be managed by Mr. Mercer in central office and then there's a whole lot of complications for that. So we really need, I propose it just be through the high school. Doesn't preclude another school from applying for their own. Obviously, I mean, it's a fairly simple process, just, you know, completing that long form and getting your signature. So those are the two things. And then I think there was a question about the process. We really would work this through the Booster Club, alumni association that we're going to create. So those would be the, the workers or the operators by which we would, would manage through that. And that to me makes it a little bit cleaner and then keep it through the high school and athletic funds. So those are, I think, the three questions that were asked and I hope that answers those questions and we're seeking approval tonight.
I just have one more question. So if you're running this through the high school, does that mean another entity within the high school could, could use the gaming license?
It could, at the high school.
So if the wire wanted to do a raffle?
The only issue with that is to make sure through Rachel at the high school that it's set up through the high school and that, that approval process for getting, being able to write a check out or to deposit is done through one location here. So that's, we just have to set that up through Rachel. Yeah.
So one other question. Each school needs to do it on their own. I think this is more of a question for Dr. Clendenning. I'm assuming that you're fundamentally okay with this. So I think the broader question is, is do we need to approve every single one or are we going to give you the authority to approve these? Because that would, that would alter the tenor of the motion that would give you the authority to do these. Now, I don't know without Roger sitting here, if we can do that, given that, and I don't know who's signing these things, if it's the board president signing or it's just superintendent.
Presently, the board president will, will sign for the district. I would, I would be very comfortable if you gave me the authority pending legal counsel that it's okay. I think the thing to remember is that the 18-year-old one is hard and fast. So if we go down to Mark or Dylan's PTOs and they want to do something, it's only for adults. I want to make sure that, and we also stay in that whole game of chance. We're not talking about playing cards or anything like that. You know, it's more of the raffles and those type of things. So I'd be very comfortable in that.
And that's, that's what I want to use it for is strictly those games of chance. That's a raffle, basically.
So is your preference that we approve the one as well as giving you the authority to review and approve future gaming opportunities?
And I will consult Mr. Mercer along the way on the financial side on how the implication would play out for us in terms of the various organizations or schools. So the motion would be to approve the high school and athletic, provide the authority to superintendent on consult with the CFO pending legal counsel opinion.
Did you get that Natalie? I'll move for approval with what, what we just talked about.
Okay, so we have a motion. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by the sign of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, the motion passes. Aye, all those opposed, hearing none, the motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, and so.
This one could have actually been under consent agenda for the PAC. This is part of the series, and this is Southern Fried Chick's Cage-Free Comedy Tour. It's coming up in November, but Mr. Young has looked at the contract, and it does meet his purview and legal counsel, so we're at this time to approve the contract with the Southern Fried Chick's Cage-Free Comedy Tour.
Okay. Any questions or comments? We need a motion.
Move for approval.
Thank you. It's kind of lucky. Okay, all right, so we have a motion for this. No other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Land. All right, now we'll move on to discussion items. We have the Niola policies.
Thank you, Mrs. Ott. Asking for you to consider for approval next month, the following eight items for our policy. One change already, I want to thank Mr. Land for this, on Roman numeral one, that is a policy 6152. Right now, we list the CFO as the person who will trigger any type of small claims or legal action. Would like to provide, Mr. Mercer, the opportunity to designate somebody else as well if he could not be available. And so we would just put chief financial officer or designate, and Jeff would still provide purview and guidance on what to do and how the process will work, but it's another step to help him along the way. The other one dealt with Title I and clarifying what's a family, because it talks about family participation, and really in terms of FERPA. So we'll make sure that's clearly defined inside of our Director of Information, and then Mrs. Moran is kind of the keeper of this in Title I, so we'll make sure that that is also articulated.
Okay, we will move on to board and administrative comments. We have Mr. Sewell up for the risk mitigation for Eastview Drive and Mallory Parkway.
Last meeting, we had engineering firms in for Eastview Drive and the Mallory Parkway projects, and we talked with them a little bit about their timeframes and the schedule management piece. And at this stage of their project development, they have designed the project, and the next step will be to let that out for construction bids. Until that construction bidding process is done, there isn't a detailed schedule for us to scrutinize at this point. So I'm going to stay engaged in that process and work through that issue with them. What I have done in the interim is I did a stakeholder analysis and a risk analysis for both of those projects, kind of details, what groups and people and programs do we operate out of those that are affected, and what steps would we have to take if one or more roadways affected by this project would not be open for that first day of school in 1819. So I have some additional work to do on that front, but I've had some good conversations with both engineering companies, and I think we're on a good track to get some satisfying answers from them on their schedules. I am getting a little bit of just real high-level indication of how much float is in their schedule, and we're working through those details. And then the last thing, I will show you, if I can get to here real quick. So this is the new alignment for the Mallory Parkway project. Recall last time, and I'll. Check, yeah, there we go. So in the last design we saw, we only had these two drives coming out, and we had no drives coming in to, and this is the middle school right here, to orient yourself. So you got 31 there. This is the old Grizzly Cub drive alignment here. This is the new Grizzly Cub drive alignment. And so they added this lane here by removing some of the grassway and some trees that are here. This brings one lane in, we'll have a lane out here, and these two lanes still coming out here. So we'll have two out and one in, and I think that will definitely serve our schools better in terms of maintaining that access to the middle school. So I found that to be a satisfying redesign, and I hope that meets with your approval.
I like it, makes sense.
Very nice.
Mr. Sewell, are you going to put a gate where, what would that be, going east?
We are, we are looking at that. Whether that's an automated gate or something that we could close, I think is still up for discussion. We've talked about whether it needs to be here or further back towards the football field, and that is something we're still looking at. We also added some signage asking traffic at all of these points in the, to yield to our buses so that, so that they can move through that intersection kind of in one nice motion. The other thing, the recent change that I just asked them for, that I'm going to have to work with them a little bit more on, is I've asked them to restrict the right-hand turn here on red, because I've noticed as I, even now as I come into work and I drive back this way to my office, when this light is green for Mallory and cars and trucks and vans are trying to move through there, somebody making that right-hand turn, and in particular if they want to go this way, really is an unsafe situation. I understand I'm going to have to work with NDOT to make that kind of change, but those are the kind of things that we're looking at to really kind of make sure we've got this intersection well thought out and as safe as we can make it.
Makes sense. And Jeff, both of these are scheduled for 2008, summer 2018?
Yes, they are. The high-level schedule I'm hearing from them is they are both scheduled to finish by the end of July, which gives us about an eight or nine-day cushion. As you've noted and as you've asked, that's really not enough detail to really scrutinize that very well, so I am pressing for more kind of thought being put into those schedules. But again, at this stage in the process, they have not, they don't have a Gantt chart with project steps to show me, to allow me to, to ask questions or scrutinize that very well at this point. So they have specified in the contract terms that they're putting up a proposal, that they do have to work through me on the scheduling and coordinating this, the closure of those roadways for the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the ISBA conference comments. Dr. Clendenning?
Yes, we had Mrs. Ott, Mr. Mercer, Mrs. Nally, myself attend. We also had Brooke Worland, who's doing her superintendency internship, attend the conference. And just a couple of highlights, we'll give each one a chance to mention maybe a session they went to that you thought, oh, that resonates. So, Mr. Mercer, we'll start now with you.
I think the one probably that I heard, and I know there was actually a couple, had to do with outreach into the community, and the school corporation hosting a series of presentations spread throughout, one month maybe transportation, one month could be finance, which clearly would be the most interesting of the bunch. But they did something for eight or nine months out of the year, and really felt like, this happened to be Frankfurt that I saw, felt like that pulled the community back closer together, was very helpful for them, lots of really good questions, good partnerships. I think they had about 60 people that had been engaged over a period of a couple of years, so that was probably the highlight for me.
Mrs. Nally?
I'm not sure it was the highlight, but I spent most of my day with the Department of Ed, trying just to stay up to speed on what is coming down the pike. One thing I learned was that this year, we will receive two letter grades, one from the state, which is our normal way of receiving letter grades, and then also a federal from ESSA, a different letter grade. So it's quite possible that schools could have two very different grades, or as a district, we could have two very different grades. So that is something that we need to think about, creating a communication plan around that, what does that look like, letting our teachers know, letting our parents know as well. But that's just for one year this year, because we're transitioning then 1819, we'll be back to just one, one letter grade, and it will be based on the federal guidelines rather than the state guidelines.
Mr. Sewell also attended on day two. Did you have any sessions you wanted to highlight? Sorry, I should have just stayed, I apologize.
I attended a session on higher tech, was a, I think, company maybe synergistic, does that sound right? It was essentially a vocational training, technical training program, looked very good. I understand we may have that or something like that at C9.
It's a piece of it, yes.
Yeah, but that was definitely a good, as we look at being career-ready, looked like a good type of program to look at.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ott?
Well, one of the highlights was, we went on Tuesday morning and watched Mrs. Smith present on NWA testing and scoring. That was really, she did a fantastic job. And then the other one that I went to that I really enjoyed was the one on education foundations. I think there's some stuff that I can bring back to our foundation, just some ideas of things that we're not doing that maybe we could do to help the kids some more, so.
Two quick things. Mrs. Worland attended a very similar one, it was in Noblesville School, and they, their uniqueness was, the same group of 25 attended, and they met at the school, and then they would go to different schools and learn different opportunities. They would come to the office and hear Jeff talk about that, or they would go to high school, and they heard about extracurricular, what options do our kids have involved in that? They chose an eclectic mix. They had 10 stakeholders that were community-driven around businesses, industry, and 15 were parents, wanting to know more about the school. Their first year, they had to handpick. Second year, they had 90 people apply for 25 spots. They were very excited about what they were doing. Brooke attended and kind of gave a capture of that. I may have the numbers on the parents and stakeholders mixed up, but it was 25 total. The keynote speaker was a retired professor from Arizona State and Colorado as well, and his, the title was "The Right Choice, Rights Choice." Talked about public education and what's happening. A couple of interesting facts that he provided. He said that the entire conversation about choice is really coming from the Billionaire Boys Club, is what he called it. And he basically said that the Cook Brothers and Bill Gates were driving the entire conversation around choice, and highlighted the different things. Presented a high school in Scottsdale, Arizona, is that right? That they're listed, it's called Basis Public Charter School. They start off with about 200 freshmen. They graduate 24, but they tout the highest number of national merit kids. Well, you can see that there's a little bit of head scratching in that process, but then the other thing that was kind of interesting that he showed, right after he told us that, he then went to the IRS tax form of the headmaster, how much money he generated. So it definitely caused some interesting conversations among people. And so that was, that was interesting as well. And I also attended with Deb, the ESSA, and what's happening with that. I will say that our new superintendent of public instruction, Dr. McCormick, is awesome. She is doing a great work for public education. She is reaching out, she's sharing information, she's being transparent, and really trying to balance what's happening in the legislative side. So we're, it's a welcome breath of fresh air, and I felt like that was what she was doing. So that was the conference.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the calendar. Dr. Clendenning?
Just a few things to highlight. We have fall break next week. It's also National Schools Bus Safety Week, so we'll kind of capture that when we come back. Thanksgiving's coming up, and then we have the Quarterly Board Visit to Mr. Perley in Needham Elementary on November the 10th. And then we'll schedule again with Mr. Mercer on the projects as we move forward sometime in the early winter as well. We talked about that, that's also on the calendar. Jeff and I will get our calendars mixed up and checked with you all for that quarterly visit as well.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on, public comments. Okay, seeing none?
Move to your turn.
Thank you.